Okay. Do we need to restart, or are you ready to call roll?
Well, we go. We'll do one thing here. And, okay. I'll call the roll. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilmember Ofero?
Present.
Councilmember Buscaino?
Present.
Councilmember Rue?
Present.
Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Terrific, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you please announce the call-in information for members of the public who wish to speak on today's agenda item?
Certainly. Uh, the number for calling in is six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-six-eight-three-three. And then the meeting ID number you'll be asked for is nine-four-six-nine-three-seven-four-three-six-five-zero. And then you press the pound to enter. And then press pound again when prompted for the participant ID. Please note that this only works if you call in. There's no way to access this on your desktop. We've been getting a number of calls to that effect.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and take up item number one on today's agenda. Uh, Mr. Clerk, could you please read that into the record?
Item number one, Board of Fire Commissioners and Los Angeles Fire Department reports relative to proposed decision or recommendation in regard to the 2018 brush clearance assessment appeals.
For this item, we have the fire department on call to answer questions specific to each appeal, uh, that is presented by, uh, or to the committee, rather. Uh, Chief Hayden and Fire Inspector Paul Terrace, uh, are available. The committee will hear from appellants, review assessments, consider newly discovered or additional evidence offered by property owners, and make recommendations based on information that is presented. Appellants have been notified in advance of their right to appear before this committee to appeal decisions by the Board of Fire Commissioners. Before we move into public comment, I would like to call on the fire department to please provide an overview of the brush clearance requirements and the appeals process. Chief Hayden?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning, and good morning to the honorable, um, councilmembers. Uh, thank you for having us here at the Public Safety Committee, uh, virtual meeting. Uh, we do appreciate that. And so, a quick summary of what, uh, all, um, individuals living in the very high-fire-hazard severity zone can anticipate for brush clearance would be a mailing that will typically go out in March. That particular mailing lets everyone know that, uh, defensible space slash brush clearance is a, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year responsibility. However, uh, we will begin our, uh, brush clearance, um, uh, season, uh, that, uh, following May. Because of COVID this particular year, that, uh, timeline has been changed. But, uh, for the year in, uh, question, uh, we did begin in May. And what we initially will do is have a cadre of individuals go out for what's called an initial inspection. Based on whether that, uh, particular parcel owner is, uh, found to be in compliance or not, we'll, uh, determine how we proceed. If they are in compliance, uh, then we will simply, uh, sign them off as being cleared by owner, and, uh, no further action is, uh, necessary, nor is there any associated fees. If, in fact, uh, we find that there are violations, then at that point, uh, they will be assessed an additional twenty-eight dollars for that additional, uh, inspection, or re-inspection that will have to take place. Thereafter, our inspectors will go back out, determine if there is, in fact, uh, a remaining violation or violations, and if so, then they are then assessed an additional, uh, fee, which I believe is, what is that?
Five-hundred-nine.
Five-hundred-and-nine dollars. It was recently adjusted, so I apologize for that. Um, thereafter, if, in fact, they are still found to be in violation, uh, an inspector will go out for a third time, where they will then identify those, um, violations. They will leave a posting on the, uh, property indicating that, in fact, uh, there are violations still present, and that notification is to let them know that the city of Los Angeles is now forced to clear and/or abate the, uh, nuisance by, uh, contracted, um, vendors to come out and actually, uh, perform the brush clearance. Thereafter, uh, they are allowed an appeals process. That appeals process does require with a, uh, report in writing and pay a fifty-dollar fee. Uh, that appeals process does take place in the, uh, Van Nuys office. We do hire an, an objective, uh, board. We typically will have two, uh, hearing officers that will hear the case. Those individuals will then render a decision. Those decisions are then compiled, uh, summarily and brought to our Board of Fire Commissioners. Uh, the Board of Fire Commissioners will then, at that point, um, uh, either approve or ask additional questions with regard to our process. And, uh, thereafter, obviously, it comes to our Public Safety Committee, which would be, uh, our honorable board today. And thereafter, appellants still have another opportunity with city councils. But, uh, that's a, uh, a summarized view of what happens throughout any particular year for brush clearance.
Thank you very much. Um, colleagues, uh, if there are no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and open up public comments. Appellants will be given three minutes to state their case, and members of the public speaking generally on this item will be given one minute. Uh, so we are gonna go ahead and allow for a speaker to join. Speaker, please state your name and your property address, and give us a moment before we start your time.
Uh, and I'm sorry, there's something wrong with my camera, and I can't see you, and you can't see me. My name is John Ladner, L-A-D-N-E-R, and the property address runs from twenty-four-thirty-four Thomas Street up to-
This call is now being recorded.
Up to and including twenty-four-fifty-six-dash-fifty-eight Thomas Street. Uh, there are four lots, but-
Okay, hold one second, please, while we pull up the record.
So, Madam Chair, um, if, uh, if you would like to return to page thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven in your appeals booklets, uh, as well as the rest of the honorable, uh, members. This is APN five-two-zero-eight, zero-two-eight-zero-zero-two, three, four, and five.
Got it. Colleagues, you're all, you're all following? You've got the documents?
And, uh, lastly, this would be Council District One.
Okay. All right, um... Okay, Speaker, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Um, I was out of Los Angeles most of the second half of two thousand and eighteen, but was doing my very best with an odd assembly of people who failed me to try to achieve full brush compliance, because I did get a non-compliance letter in the mail, uh, at the beginning of the summer. Um, I agreed at the hearing with the fire department that I was not in full compliance. Um, they had photographs, we had quite a bit of discussion, and I think the hearing officer appeared to agree that I had made some strong efforts to, uh, rectify the situation, but I had not done it on time, and things kept nature was ahead of me, so to speak. Um, I had taken, gone to the hearing because I was concerned that the labor charges worked out would be about a thousand dollars per day per worker, and that, uh, was never really addressed in the decision by the hearing officer, um, but I felt that that was, uh, a fairly high labor charge, although I also did say at the hearing that they did a very, very good job. Uh, the second point I had at the hearing, and there was a little bit of new evidence on that which I'd submitted, is that the final notice was not posted in a location that would be reasonably visible to the property owner or anyone walking on the land. These four contiguous lots, on one side it's Thomas Street, on the other side their street-to-street goes to Alta. All of the entrances, all the driveways, there used to be more houses there than there are now, uh, all the mailboxes, all the, uh, legal addresses are on Thomas Street, and this one piece of paper was tied to the fence at the bottom of the extremely steep back hill that all these properties share, as it heads down towards Alta Street, which is across from Lincoln High School. There is no reason to go to that part of the property in general, and I could not understand why they didn't put the notice somewhere, you know, near the mailbox, or on the front door, or something that would be clearly visible, because it would've given me another few weeks to really hustle and get the rest of the compliance achieved. Um, and I think, in light of my good efforts that were obviously inadequate, two of the administrative fees of the four lots were waived. And the, the new evidence is that because of Lincoln High School, Alta Street is gated and locked, so you can't even drive down where that notice was in the ordinary course of travel, which I never did, that nobody I know takes that route anyway, because you never know whether you're gonna be locked out. Um, that sort of reinforces my request that you consider waiving, I'm almost done, that you consider, that you consider waiving all of the administrative fees, because the administration of the due process, although technically correct, really did not adequately notify anybody that we had a last chance to clear the land.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, caller. So, just to be clear, we, I haven't, I'm not discovering any new evidence from what was previously presented to the committee, um... So, colleagues, uh-
I, I did, I did submit it. I did submit it.
Colleagues, did you have, uh, any questions, or, uh, Chief?
Yes, um, so, um, Madam Chair, as we reviewed this information, it is our determination there actually is no new evidence, uh, with regard to where the post occurs. I think it's important for the honorable board to be aware of the fact that we actually exceed what the fire code, uh, asks for, which is either, uh, mailing and, um, excuse me, uh, mailing or posting. Uh, we post, uh, with the notification that we will begin the actual brush clearance process. However, uh, we do exceed what the fire code already, um, typically would, um, uh, ask for our fire department. So, this, um, Mr. Ladner was provided, uh, both mailings on not one, but four different parcels, uh, and in terms of where it was actually posted, uh, the hearing officer did waive administrative fees already. So, we recommend that there be no change and that this be sustained.
Could I make one final comment on the new evidence?
No, sir. We've, uh, we've accepted your, your testimony and your public comment, um, and so- Without objection? Adam, do we need to take a vote on each individual, or do we just make the recommendations and...
Um, you can do them, uh, as a whole.
Okay.
That's your choice.
Okay. Um, so I'd like to move that we, uh, confirm the original assessment, and without objection, that'll be the order.
No objection.
Okay. Do you have to read the roll, ma'am?
No.
Okay.
Okay, the next caller?
Yes! I wanna speed on all the lanes, please!
Okay, Mr. Speaker, uh, you have one minute to speak on this item generally.
But you gave the other nigger three minutes! I wanna be treated equally as a nigger!
Mr. Sinler, do you have a specific address to speak on?
Uh, yes! Five-zero-one-one North Grove.
That isn't an item that we're discussing at this time.
So...
So you have one minute for order. Your time starts now.
Okay, you fucking cunt! Good morning, and good morning to John Lee! Please! I implore you, Mr. Lee, to overturn these lanes! Vote now on them and refund administrative costs! I think the FBI is looking at this program started by Mitchell Englander and drafted by John Lee to steal money from hard-working homeowners who clear brush! But John Lee is a specialist in removing weeds from bushes! Yes, especially in Las Vegas! Ha-ha-ha-ha! So remember, you guys are all being watched by the FBI! And all of these lanes you're violating the city charter, 'cause each appellate is allowed a hearing in camera! You sad fucking cunt!
Okay. All right. Next caller? Hello, Speaker, please state your name, your property address, and give us a moment for us to start your time. Hello, Speaker, please state your name.
Hello, are you speaking to me? I believe I've been muted. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you can give us your name and your property, your property address, and give us a moment so we can start your time.
Absolutely. My name is Metal Mortimer. The last name is N-O-A-T-A-M-E-R, and I do have the property's, uh, parcel number. It is five-five-five-six-zero-one-five-zero-one-eight.
Okay, hold on one second, please.
Thank you so much.
It's, uh, page, where'd you go? It's you.
Page sixty-
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Uh, just, uh, so that you are aware, um, we're trying to-
Sixty-eight, page sixty-eight.
This is page sixty-eight out of the appeals booklet. And, um, we did not receive any additional information from this parcel owner.
No, it's actually page sixty-seven.
Yes, sixty-seven, correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, again, we don't have any additional information outside of the page.
Sure.
I'm trying to determine the council district in just a moment.
Uh, that's forty-one.
Madam Chair, it would be CD four.
Okay. Uh, okay, Speaker, go ahead and, uh, present your, uh, new, present your, uh, you can start your public comment.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for your time. Um, I received this bill back in June of two thousand and nineteen, and, uh, uh, I was surprised by the fees. Um, I co-owned this property with my father, and neither one of us received anything prior to, um, this bill. Uh, while I completely understand that fire safety is extremely important, and, um, I've had to deal with it myself, because I live close to the Santa Ana Mountains, uh, I'd be happy to pay the fee, but the administrative fee is just a lot for me and my family. I would kindly like to ask, um, if you could, this one time, help us by removing that fee, and we'd be happy to pay the clearing fee.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rue?
Uh, Madam Chair, um, uh, at a one-time, correct, uh, during this time, uh, pandemic, uh, I would do agreeable, and I would like to make a motion if it's a real administrative fee. There is, uh, the responsibility for the cost of terms, but I thought it, um, it's
Okay, can you just, I, I, it's, uh, okay. So, Mr. Rue wants to make a motion to make a one-time exception of waiving the administrative fee? Is that correct? Cause I'm getting feedbacks.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, colleagues, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And, uh, so, uh, we will go ahead and, uh, unless there's any objections, we will go ahead and make that recommendation to, uh, to reduce the amount and confirm as modified. And that'll be the order. Thank you. Okay. Speaker, please state your name, your property address, and give us a moment before we start your three minutes.
Uh, Warner Urbina, two-six-one-one, Round Drive.
Oh, Warner Urbina, okay. Give us one moment, please.
Madam Chair, uh, call your attention to page forty-seven. Uh, this would be, uh, Council District One.
Okay, uh... Uh, Mr. Urbina, you have three minutes, starting now.
Well, who's, who's in this meeting?
This is the meeting of the, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting, made up of council members.
Okay, well, who's, who's, who's that call?
Excuse me?
Who's on the call?
This is Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Buscaino, Councilmember Rue, and Councilmember Ofero. You have three minutes.
All right, so, uh, I sent over an email to, uh, Mr. Lid. I don't know if he ordered, uh, the documentation over to you guys. Um, I had gotten a, uh, brush fire inspection in May of two thousand, uh, eighteen, in which the, uh, the fire marshal came out, uh, as he is, usually does every year. Uh, no report, everything was good, um, no citation, no, nothing about the tree, um, and then November came, and I got this letter, uh, posted on my door saying, hey, you know, uh, you need to cut that tree down. So, there are several emails on the exhibits I sent over to Mr. Lid that shows that I was unemployed. There was the emails where I told the fire marshal that I couldn't afford, uh, a contractor to cut the tree down. And, you know, I asked for the arborist to come out, uh, never came out, um, supposedly there was supposed to be a contractor that was gonna call me, never got called. Uh, next thing I know, the tree was cut, I get an invoice in the mail, and now, um, I had a hearing, I don't know, with a third-party person, never gave me her name, but, um, at this meeting, I was to hand out a bunch of, uh, documentation to support, you know, um, the issue with regards to the tree. So, in my email, I had stated that, you know, when I, uh, bought the house, the neighbor around the neighborhood, um, had, uh, asked the developer to cut the tree down, he never did it. And then I called the, uh, well, actually, I got documentation from the city council, from the city, regarding the, uh, the actual new development, and the tree is not even on the survey. The tree is not even the geo- geological reports. Uh, all the, the records shown from the depth, from the inspectors, doesn't even call out this tree. So, um, whether they turned a blind eye, or they just didn't, you know, I guess there wasn't any surcharges to the seventeen-foot retaining wall, uh, the tree was, you know, it's a massive, it was a massive tree, so it wasn't like, you know, I can just grab a, you know, a chainsaw and go just start cutting the limbs off. It needed to be done professionally, if someone can get hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Urbina. Mr. Urbina, your, your three minutes are, are up, uh, on this case. Um, Chief, was there any addition, new, uh, evidence that was presented? Cause I, I don't see.
Um, Madam Chair, there is no new evidence, um, being, uh, provided, however, because of the financial hardship of Mr. Urbina, we are, uh, willing to waive the admin fees attached to this particular, um, parcel. However, uh, that was a very large tree, very dangerous, it was dead. If there's any civil litigation that needs to take place between Mr. Urbina and any neighbors, that is outside of our purview and not the responsibility of the city. And so, I think it would be more than fair, given his, uh, financial situation, to waive the admin fees, and, um, uh, ask that he pay the full cost of the actual labor performed by our contractors.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Okay. Thank none, uh-
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Um, uh, considering the situation, uh, uh, the previous gentleman's situation, would it be okay if we put him on some sort of a payment plan? Because it is a large amount of the, um, I think it's about thirteen thousand dollars, which is the, uh, the actual removal fee. So, if he's unemployed, um, there's probably no way for us to pay that off, except if we put him on some sort of a payment plan, if that's possible.
So, we'll have to see if the department is capable of setting up something in the event of, that's not my understanding of, we can waive the fees, uh, the administrative fees, uh, but, uh, Chief, could you, uh, inform the members of what the process is for collection?
We will confer with the county, um, and to be respectful of Mr. Urbina's situation, uh, we will be glad to look into, uh, any sort of a payment plan that could be established, and we would also be glad to report back, uh, to Public Safety Committee, uh, with regard to our findings. Uh, I have no idea if the county can accommodate that, but if there's any, um, uh, special, um, allowances, we'll definitely make every effort to make that happen.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I could make a quick announcement, if Mr. Urbina is still listening in, um, you could go to the Julius Free Loan, uh, dot org, if you could call them, or, uh, email them, and they have a loan and grant program, and the loan is at zero percent interest, um, if he needs assistance. So, that's another, uh, resource that might be available to him as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Uh, so colleagues, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, recommend the approval of the reduced amount, uh, with the, the reduction as opposed to the elimination of the administrative fee, uh, and confirm as modified, without objection. That'll be the order. Thank you. Okay. Caller, please state your name and your property address.
Hi, this is A.R.F. Mecatti. The property address is eight-five-five-five Hedges Place.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name one more time, sir?
I'll spell it out. A-R-E-F, as in Frank. M as in Mike. I-K-A-T, as in Tom. I.
Okay, hold on one second, please.
Madam Chair, um, if I may, can we ask the caller to provide the APN, if he has that available?
Sure. Caller, do you have-
I've got the package, I've got, I've got the package number or the invoice number, um...
Okay.
So, the package number is, oh, I do have the APN.
Hold on one second, please.
Madam Chair, that does appear to be, could be the, uh, correct number, and the Council District is, just a moment, the Road, CD four.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, sir, you have, uh, three minutes for your, uh, to present your, uh, your case. Go ahead.
So, a representative of the, of the owner met with a couple of individuals in the fee process, where we provided invoices, evidencing the work done, and pictures as well. Um, and, and we, you know, kind of, um, tried to dispute the, the amount that the contractor is charging us. It is multiple times what, what the going rates are, but I don't think we went anywhere with this. And, and now, uh, what I would like to ask is, um, you know, information about the process where those contractors are being selected, how their fees are being assessed, and just make sure that, you know, we are being, uh, correctly charged those amounts, and I couldn't find this information anywhere. Besides, um, there is mention in the letter denying the fee that, uh, pictures has been provided, the conditions that existed, uh, you know, uh, we, we do not seem to, to be in possession of any such, uh, of any such picture. And again, uh, the, the, we, we did, we timely did the clearance, uh, the brush clearance, it might have not been enough, I'm not disputing this, but we, 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 uh, we, we tried to do that, and we went again and did it one more time.
Okay, thank you. That, uh, is that, would your, your presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Madam Chair, um, so, thank you. Uh, just to sort of summarize our process, uh, we do, um, hire private contractors, those private contractors are required by contract to pay, uh, prevailing wages. We're very, uh, aware of the costs associated with many of these parcels, and without fail will only accept the low bid, uh, process for any of these, um, parcels. So, therefore, uh, with this particular APN, the lowest bid we were, uh, provided was, in fact, the one awarded for this particular parcel. To that, our contractors are required to have a C twenty-seven state certification, um, license indicating that they are, um, in any, in many instances, either licensed arborist and/or, uh, capable of providing safe and, uh, proficient, uh, brush clearance. So, with that, unfortunately, the city has to, uh, hire the very best contractors we possibly can, and with the prevailing wages, uh, in many instances, they will, uh, parcel owners will find that if they were not, uh, compliant throughout the year, that, uh, their bill will be substantially higher, uh, if they were not, um, uh, allowed to perform this, or if they did not perform this particular, uh, process by themselves. So, with that, we are, uh, identifying that there is no new change, and that, uh, the cost of clearance, uh, is the burden of the parcel owner and not that of the city, uh, the citizens of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Chief. Um, you know, again, one of the reasons, colleagues, and I just want to reiterate this for, uh, for the benefit of all the speakers, you know, we know how devastating brush fires can be, uh, in, you know, my, many of our districts have, uh, been subjected to having mass evacuation, uh, that in some cases could have been avoided, uh, with the, uh, with the pattern of the fires, it could have been avoided with substantial brush clearance. Many homes are saved as a result of this practice, and while we understand and appreciate, uh, the process, uh, with respect to, uh, individuals that hadn't completed it, uh, the city has to, uh, enforce this rule to assure that this compliance occurs. Uh, many of these hillside areas are, uh, leave our communities very vulnerable, and, uh, you know, the, the best way for folks to avoid, uh, the costs associated with enforcement and, uh, and the action that the city is required to take, is to make sure that they're compliant in, uh, doing their due diligence in, uh, fulfilling the obligations that are required, uh, for brush clearance, uh, at their expense. So, uh, the best way to avoid this is to ensure that they are, um, in fact, uh, taking care of the brush clearance and hiring the proper, uh, individuals to do that clearance on those properties. So, um, colleagues, unless there's any, uh, any comments, I'd like to confirm the original assessment.
Second.
Second, great. Seeing no objection, that'll be the order. And-
It's Eric Previn, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Previn. Uh, are you calling on a specific case, or are you calling for general-
No, I was calling to give a public comment on the process, yeah, exactly. Tell me what happened.
Hold on one second. I will certainly let you know, give me one second.
You arranging the technical difficulty scrambler?
Go ahead, Mr. Previn, you have one minute.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn, and you're apparently participating with John Lee, David Rue, Joe Buscaino, Mitchell Farrell, and you are the chair, and I appreciate that you're presiding over this process. I'm worried that there's a possibility, um, that this is part of the kind of pay-to-play scheme, because obviously, if you need to get a waiver from someone like Mr. Rue, who just cheerfully provided a giant administrative waiver, um, you have to kind of curry favor with the council. So, I know the council loves those kinds of situations, but I think that the public doesn't benefit from that. It's very much like the lien process, where, oh, if you want to get rid of the lien, talk to your council member, this is Fire Appeals. Vacationing of city property is another one. And I know, you know, Mitchell Farrell has been, you know, kind of a leader in the parking one, where you can set up preferential parking districts with the cooperation of your many well-off neighbors who want to pay for it, and then, uh, you go to the crickorian of the, of the scenario, and nobody knows what's going on in the background. So, this is the real problem, and I hope that, um, you know, yeah, is that it?
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Yep, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Hello?
Okay. Speaker, hi, um, please state your name and your property address.
Yeah, Atossa Nasimi, and the address is four, forty, hold on, forty-four fifty Gable Drive in Encino, California, nine-
Hold on one second. Okay, hold on one second, please.
Uh-huh.
Your name, I'm sorry, your name again, please?
Atossa, A-T-O-O-S-A, last name is Nasimi, N-A-S-S-I-M-I.
Okay, hold on, please.
Uh, page eight, and CD ninety, Encino's gonna be true.
Okay. CD five.
CD five, okay. Um, Madam Chair, uh, looks like we're on page eight, and that would be CD five, we believe.
Okay, Ms., uh, Nasimi, uh, go ahead, you have, uh, hold on, let me start your time, you have three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, actually, I was meeting somebody like, uh, a while ago regarding the brush cleaning, and I told them, I've never received any papers regarding that, I've never received any, because the tenants who are living there, they have, they don't know any English, they never gave me any papers, somehow maybe they thought there is, uh, some advertisement or anything, so they threw it away, or whatever reason, I've never had anything regarding that. I, even though I have like gardener, even I was like paying him to go every month for cleaning, and un- unfortunately, at that time, you know, just since then, I never went there to look at it, I had like, uh, my mom at the hospital, brain surgery, you know, just, I was extremely busy with so many stuff, taking care of two disabled, but I always ordered the trash bin, I had the garbage, you know, I even paid for it, I had a gardener, but I've never looked at it to see, I mean, if there is anything left. And, uh, this is gonna be very tough for me, especially right now, this situation, to pay for this, and I really appreciate if you can, you know, just, uh, do something about it, because it's gonna be, with no job, it is impossible, honestly, it's impossible for me to afford that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nasimi. Um, so, are, are you concluding your time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief?
Yeah, uh-
Was there any, was there any new, uh, documentation provided?
There is no new documentation provided, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Uh, so, as I understand, and looking at the, um, recommendations by our hearing officer, the administrative fee was, in fact, already waived, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, for, um, this particular property owner. Uh, however, I believe that, um, given the fact that this, um, is, uh, a situation where there's actually an apartment building or something thereof, uh, on this particular property, this is a scenario where, uh, she, um, needs to be concerned about not only the safety of everyone around, but for those individuals living on this parcel as well, and defensible space in this particular instance is extremely important. Uh, I understand that she believes that she did, in fact, um, perform some level of brush clearance. Um, the best that we could offer is if she were to provide a, a cost associated for what she's already provided in a form of either a, a return check, or rather, a clear check, or something of that nature, we would consider waiving whatever cost she's already, uh, provided to her landscaper or gardener. Outside of that, again, this is a scenario where the city, uh, should not have to incur this additional cost.
Well, colleagues, I'd like to recommend that we refer the case back to the fire department if there is, in fact, any new evidence, because we, you have not received anything thus far?
No, I'm sorry, I was muted. We have not received any new evidence.
Okay. Um, well, you know, colleagues, I think at this time, I want to go ahead and refer it back to the department if, in fact, you do receive any, uh, evidence of payment, that you would then want to recommend a reduced amount, that we can go ahead and honor that.
Yes, and in lieu of that, Madam Chair, how would you like for us to proceed?
Um, if, in fact, the appellant then does provide you with any documentation that you wanted to consider, then at that point, we can, we can reconsider this item, and, uh, with your recommendation of, of, uh, whether or not there would be an acceptable reduced amount.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes.
Um, so, colleagues, uh, without objection, that'll be the order.
No objection.
Speaker, please state your name and your, hi, state your name and your property address, please.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Chu Kyungun, my, uh, Chu Kyungun, and my company name is Yun Sung Enterprise LLC. Yes.
What's the address, please?
Uh, they have no address, uh, just APN number is five 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 six zero one five zero four six.
Page fourteen, yes.
Hold on one second.
This is District Four, seven. This is page fourteen. Madam Chair, yeah, I, I apologize, it would be page fourteen, and this would be CD seven.
Right, this one. Um, we start, we start-
Is it page sixty-eight or page fourteen? Can you tell us that?
Uh, I believe it's page fourteen, uh, Councilmember Rue, and that would be CD seven.
Okay.
Can you please, uh, ma'am, can you please repeat the APN?
Yes, APN number, they can, that's five 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 six zero one five zero four six.
I believe that's page sixty-eight, sixty-four.
Yeah.
Uh-
Okay, this is Yun Sung.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, we had her confused with another person with a very similar name, I apologize for that.
Eight sixty-eight.
Uh, so, this would be, uh, CD four, and you're correct, um, this is, um, uh, page sixty-eight.
Okay. Okay, Speaker, you've got three minutes to present any new evidence. Thank you.
Oh, oh, okay, uh, this is, I cleaned, uh, uh, this is a dead property, like a very lowed property, we cannot go inside to clean the brush, but, uh, we start, uh, tried in first two thousand seventeen, we can't even go inside because of the, um, front man, the guard, he doesn't let me out, so we tried to go in another area to clean street to go inside, and, uh, we clean up all the time, every year, because of fire, uh, service, they send me letter, please clean up, otherwise they're gonna give me, um, fine, so we all the time clean, clean, all the time, and, uh, we even call the payment eighty, eighty dollar all the time, and, uh, we thought, uh, when you clean, everything is a fine, then, uh, I don't know, so I got the bill, uh, maybe I didn't understand, I got the bill again, so, we thought everything okay. No, and they have no access over there, first of all, but since we clean, uh, we, uh, find out, uh, another new owner, the, they move out the man before, was the property class, then, um, then another new owner let me get in, so we all the time going clean. So, we just clean, uh, another one this year, and another last year, twice a year, and, uh, I don't know why, I got, uh, so much eighteen hundred dollar bill, plus another four hundred thirty dollars, so I was like, uh, um, do you move some bill, please, because this is a very hard time for me to, you know, pay the bill. Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, we have evidence of the next neighborhood, every time we go there, we talk to woman, uh, who brought over there, sixteen, nineteen, one crazy woman, she's there right now, every time we go to the, like, the four, four hours, five hour, we talk to her, actually, my manager talked to her all the time, she tried to buy the property or last, so, that's why we have evidence to clean all the time, huh, yeah. But we don't have a lease, because, uh, my manager, he clean over there, so I pay by the pay law, so I don't think I have, I have a lease for that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief?
Um, Madam Chair, uh, with regard to this particular, uh, appellant, um, we're confident that, uh, the fire department did everything we possibly could to notify the, uh, uh, property owner. Uh, we, uh, don't see any reason, there's no new evidence, and we see no reason to change the, uh, initial costs associated with, uh, this parcel owner.
I got that. Yeah, could it be Rue?
Manager, um, you know, the, uh, regarding the access issue, I'd like to send this back, this is back to the department, that, um, uh, worked with the, uh, property owner, uh, on that access issue, because it looked like, um, they had access to it, and they had some issues, we had done good in, um, from what the caller stated, so, um, I don't think that information was provided to the department, so, um, I understand, I mean, they're just talking, they're talking, saying verbally right now, um, it seemed that there might have been some issues, so, if I could, we put it back to the department, for them to look into the new information that, uh, caller has provided, uh, that the property owner has provided, and see if there's, if there's something that could be what that.
So, uh, Mr. Rue, I have, I have concerns about that only because, again, all of these property owners, there's, uh, in terms of access, it's all standard, and if the department can get access to it to clear it, it raises the, it's like the question whether or not that's an argument that could be used by anyone. I think it's really, uh, a practical matter that we have to make sure that brush clearance is invested, and that people own the responsibilities that they have as property owners. is invested, and that people own the responsibilities that they have as property owners, to clear that property. I'm not sure why-
Well, it's my understanding that, uh, it looks, I mean, I don't know, I just have the one thing in front of me, it appears, and I don't know if the fire department has more information about the, of the actual location, but I believe the caller, the property owner was saying that the previous property owner, that was addition to a property, that you have to go through, would not allow them to, to, to access to her own property, which doesn't make sense, but then since then, the property has been sold, and now the new property owner is allowing her to get access. So, um, it looks like this occurred when she couldn't get access, and it looked like she tried, multiple times, she tried to get access to clean it. And I'm just asking, because the concern is the access to it was only five hundred dollars, but the administrative fee was thirteen hundred, I mean, I don't want to just waive the administrative fee, but, um, I could see why the administrative fee is almost triple the cost of a clearance fee, um, but this is why I'd like for the fire department to investigate a little further about this access issue, because if it truly was the property, another property did not allow access to it, and I don't understand why they wouldn't know the access points, um, that's something I would like for the department to look into, or if the department has got answer.
Chief?
Um, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Councilmember Rue, so we do have pictures of the property, uh, from what I see here, there appears to be ample access, however, the picture may not paint the proper, um, picture, excuse me, for what exactly is happening here, so what we can do is consult with both our contractor, who performed the work, as well as have a inspector determine whether or not there was proper access. Uh, at this point, given that the contractor did, um, was able to gain access, um, I would be curious just to find out how they were able to, and I'd be glad to report that.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I'd like to defer it, Madam Chair, and, uh, kind of drop that to us.
Okay. Um, so then we will have this item referred back to fire department for further investigation, and then we will have a final determination, uh, to report back to the committee, or to the council. Um, and colleagues, going back, if we could go back, colleagues, to the last, to the item preceding this, Mr. Clerk? We want to, uh, we want to move forward with the recommendation and have the fire department work with the property owner on a revised recommendation to come actually before council.
Okay, um, that's fine. What we'll have to do is we'll have to wait on submitting this to council, and then, uh, together, we move forward.
Yeah, so both of these items, both with the, this item and the last, the proceeding, um, so that we don't have any further delays, we will just have the department revisit those two items, and then with a final recommendation to come to full council.
All right.
Okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, next caller? Can you provide your name and your property address?
Sure, my name is Adam Frank, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, my property address is twenty-three sixty Hoben, I'm sorry, twenty-three sixty Laurel Canyon, Laurel Canyon Boulevard.
Hold on one second.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if it's possible, if we could provide the APN, it's much quicker for us to reference.
Sure, could you please provide the APN, please?
Sure, there's actually three APNs, let me, let me grab them. Uh, first one is five, five, six, five, zero, one, seven, oh, three, five, and then the other two are identical except they're oh, three, oh, and oh, three, two.
So, Madam Chair, I believe this particular parcel owner would be towards the rear of the book, uh, and those page numbers towards the rear would be one, two, and three, I'm sorry, one, three, and, yeah, one through, one through five?
One through six.
One through six, I apologize, uh, towards the rear of the book, CD two, and I believe that this was from, is this from this particular year, or?
Twenty seventeen.
This is actually from twenty seventeen, however, we are, we did allow for this particular appellant to address the Public Safety Committee for their particular situation.
Okay, hold on. Okay, caller, you have, uh, three minutes?
Okay, great, thank you. First of all, thank you to everybody for, uh, for letting me be heard, and thank you to the fire department and the administrative, uh, person who oversaw it. Um, we, we got a letter back that said that our, the evidence we presented was credible, and the proposal was, the recommendation was to reduce the, the burden from what was thirty-eight thousand dollars to, to about eighteen thousand dollars, so thank you for, for hearing us and, and, uh, and all that. Uh, you know, the takeaway on the findings was that they found it credible that we, that we did the work, and I think if you put together all the, the pieces, we did the brush clearance before, uh, before the city sent someone out, and then after, and the real issue was that we never received notice because the property was, was rented, and we had tried numerous times to, to change the notice address with the assessor's office, and that was unsuccessful. Ultimately, we sent, um, we sent certified mail there, which they saw evidence of, and that, and that the notice addresses still weren't changed. So, I wanted to say thank you, we appreciate the gesture to, to reduce it, but, but eighteen thousand five hundred dollars is still a huge amount of money, this is something that every year we pay thirty-five hundred dollars to do, and we've done it every single year, and now I don't even have a tenant there, my tenant has, has not paid rent in, in April, not paid rent in May due to COVID, is probably leaving, uh, and really just wanted to ask, um, you know, for this either to be, to be waived or reduced to, to, you know, what we've paid in other years, thirty-five hundred, which we actually did do the work that year, but in, 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 you know, I know now I did the work about a month ago, and I've already got green shoots up there, up there already, so that, that was really the ask, I did send through, uh, um, some additional evidence as, as requested, but this is just a huge, huge burden, and I think, I, I know that the city actually did the, the work, but there's in much the same way that we presented the information, that we did our work, and they found it credible, you know, the, the fire department showed the pictures that they, they did that, uh, but we never received notice, and it was not, and, you know, I think everybody understands that we did in good faith notify the assessor's office numerous times of a, of a different address, they were sending things to our old, our old address, and I think their, their position was, hey, listen, we also posted at the, at the site, but I have the property rented out to a tenant who obviously didn't tell me that there was anything posted there, and probably didn't understand what was, what was posted, and one other factor is that, that I actually, that the property I have there, it consists of eight parcels, these are, all the other parcels were, were, were done, and they were done, I do them as one job every year, I have a guy that, that does it for thirty-four, five hundred dollars. Anyway, that's, that's, um, thank you for your time, hopefully I didn't exceed the time.
Yeah, you're fine, thank you very much. Uh, Chief?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, so we did review, um, this particular parcel, and I must say that I think the fire department has done everything we possibly can to meet the, uh, the needs of the parcel owner. Uh, this was originally a parcel that the amount of work completed totaled thirty-five thousand, uh, eight dollars. Um, we were, um, through the appeals process, asked to reduce that amount, and currently the, uh, two, uh, we actually reduced it sixteen thousand five hundred and eight dollars, and we are now looking at an eighteen thousand five hundred dollar balance.
For three parcels.
Uh, for three total parcels.
Right.
So, given the amount that has already been reduced, I think that the only thing that would be reasonable or considerate would be to reduce the administrative fees in total, because in fact there was a legitimate, um, effort on the parcel owner's part to make sure that they did change their address, however, to no fault of the fire department, that, that information was never provided to us. So with that, I believe that the cost has already been significantly reduced, uh, the administrative fees would be something that the fire department could easily consider, however, the remaining cost should be the burden of the parcel owner in our, in our opinion.
Thank you, colleagues, any questions? Okay. Uh, seeing none, I, uh, I think I'm willing to-
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I just need to clarify one thing, I just took another look at the records, and the administrative fees were already-
Already waived, right.
Already waived, so as far as, as the fire department is concerned, uh, whatever the, whatever your committee would like for us to proceed with, obviously, but we feel comfortable with the remaining amount.
I, I agree with that, um, I want to thank the department for their work in working, uh, cooperatively with this property owner on addressing these concerns, I know the department has been working at length, um, and so with that, I'd like to move that we confirm the assessment as presented, and without objection, that'll be the order, thank you. And caller, please state your name and your property address.
Maria Moran, um, parcel number two, zero, three, two, zero, two, five, zero, zero, six.
Okay, hold on one second, please.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we're looking on our end as well, we, um, we could have that APN one more time, please?
Two, zero, three, two, zero, two, five, zero, zero, six.
And West Valley would be- Um, Madam Chair, we believe that would be page four.
Uh-huh.
And the CD, we're still trying to, uh, CD three.
Mm-hmm. Okay, caller, you have three minutes to present new evidence, starting now.
Okay, so we purchased the house back in twenty nineteen, we closed escrow on February, February twenty nineteen, and we just received this notice saying that there is seven thousand eight hundred and fifty due, but when we, um, when we, when we were in escrow, the prelim didn't state any assessments, and the nine A came back cleared, and the seller did not disclose anything was due, so we wanted to see if we can get the cost of clearance waived since we did not live at the property? Or if you could reach out to the original owner for money?
No, unfortunately, um, just like in tran- uh, property transactions, it's, uh, much like anything else, if you buy a property and you buy it with gold on it, you're the beneficiary of gold, uh, like those are transactions that the city does not engage in, um, but if you don't have any new evidence, um, on this item to present to this committee with respect to the work that was completed, uh, we can't consider that at this time. So, uh, thank you, caller. Um, Chief? I'm gonna stop for time.
Madam Chair, I, I think you already stated our position in that this is either a civil matter between the, um, the new owner and the prior owner, possibly, however, given the circumstances, we hold our position that there be no change.
Thank you, I would agree with that, colleagues, is there any questions? Okay, seeing none, I move that we confirm the original assessment, and caller advised you to, uh, to pursue privately based on the disclosures that were not provided to you at the time of the purchase. Okay, next caller? Speaker, please state your name and your property address?
My property address, APN number, five, 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 six, zero, one, five, zero, four, six, my name is Hui Kyung-un, I was disconnected by mistake.
Okay, hold on one second, please.
Sure.
I think that was, I think that was the one that, uh, asked the department to work with the property owner.
Uh, Councilmember Rue, um, yeah, was this the, uh, the access issue, sir?
I think so.
Yeah, we already, we already did this.
Yeah.
Okay.
We will report back, but it sounds as though she may have been disconnected, is that correct?
Yeah, I was by mistake disconnected you.
Oh, okay, caller, yes, um, there's gonna be a review on, on this location and determination to be recommended to council.
Okay, so, what's right, what is my outcome, what's right, I was just waiting for the letter?
No, the fire department is going to review the access issue, and we will have another recommendation, uh, we have not changed the recommendation at this time, but if there is a revision, it will be provided before the next council meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, uh, does that conclude? Okay. Okay, we have no more speakers on the-
Chair, I apologize, uh, with regard to the last caller, we will let them know what our findings are, uh, and, and let them know whether it would be appropriate for another hearing.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, so with that said, colleagues, uh, I would like to move that the Public Safety Committee confirm the proposed decisions and recommendations, uh, as modified, uh, by the committee today.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, are you picking a roll call vote?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ofero.
Aye.
Councilmember Bustamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Rue.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Terrific, thank you very much, colleagues, uh, Mr. Clerk, have you cleared the desk?
Yeah, cleared the desk, Madam Chair.
Thank you all very much, have a wonderful weekend, this meeting is-
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.